Guys know you're gonna be recorded.
We got one minute.
Everybody get super quiet when that's said.
We're all, we're all holding out on the Fifth Amendment.
I was gonna say Shyla.
Marcellus and Shyla. An hour ago, I was almost just ready to take a nap on the couch.
I had that afternoon coffee. I knew.
And I just like, oh no. Let's step back. Let's go back. This did happen one time.
Yeah.
It was like, I was all ready for the meeting. It was like five o'clock and I fell asleep on the couch and I woke up and it was like seven. I missed the meeting. So I did miss one planning meeting one time.
I have my energy drink in the car.
Oh, I, I did one. She's got a turn. Oh, there it is.
Right in the middle.
All right, let's call this meeting of the Lebanon Planning Commission to order and be standing for a flag salute, please.
With allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, for peace and justice.
Kelly, if you can call a roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners Malloy and Engleford are both excused. Commissioner Fountain, Commissioner Baxter, Commissioner Brashiers,
Chair.
Commissioner McLean,
Here.
Vice Chair Garrett Kouniarowski, and Chair Robertson.
Here. Okay, I assume you've all had a chance to look at the minutes from January 18th. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, then the minutes will stand approved as presented. And we come to a point in our agenda where if there's anybody with us this evening that would like to approach the Planning Commission on a topic that is not currently on our agenda tonight, this would be the time that we would invite you to come forward and sign in. Seeing no movement, then we will move on. We've got three public hearings scheduled tonight. And before we get into them, I'm gonna turn it over to the legal guy.
All right, tonight's first hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial hearing procedure set forth in 197763 of Oregon laws. At the commencement of the hearing, all members of the Planning Commission will be asked to announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. If you have any questions about what either of those are, please feel free to ask. We'll start out with the staff report. After the staff report, we allow questions of staff by the commission. We will then have public testimony in the format that has been provided in the notice of the action. Public testimony from audience members or anyone, or anyone online may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. Please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Land Use Regulations of the City of Lebanon. Please note the failure to raise an issue including a constitutional issue or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba may be raised not later than the close of the record or following the evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission or the city decision makers and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. When you come forward, please state your name and address when you testify, and we'll go through the procedures where the applicant will go first, as it is their burden of proof. Open it up to any further testimony in favor of the application. We'll then have any opposition to the application and rebuttal if necessary. We'll then close the public hearing and all discussion and decisions will be made by the commission at that time. With that, your Mr. Chairman, we can ask for any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact as it relates to the first file.
Okay, so in reference to planning file A-22-03, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias that needs to be reported. Seeing none, we'll turn it over to staff for staff report.
Thank you, sir. Before you tonight, if my screen wants to work, is, there we go, annexation application 22-04, might be 03, it's one of those two. It is for the property at 511 Hansard Avenue, which is located on the east side of Hansard and south of Reyes Parkway. This is a proposed annexation which would include the street frontage along the property. The property is currently within the county and is bounded by city limits on the east, the west, and the south. And so therefore, based off of it being contiguous to city limits, it is eligible for annexation. There are public facilities available in Hansard Avenue for, once the property is annexed into the city, it would be able to connect to the city utilities that are already there. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, this whole area is largely zoned and designated in the comprehensive plan as industrial. And the applicant is accepting the initial zoning per our comprehensive plan process of industrial. And so there is no zone change that is requested at this time. And so with accepting the initial zoning, no further analysis or studies is needed to identify whether or not the public facilities are able to accommodate the proposal. And with it being contiguous to city boundaries, it's eligible for annexation. So it's pretty simple, cut and dry, but that would conclude my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. So Kelly, on the applicant and in the applicant's narrative, both places are asking for a zone change. Did that go away?
Yes, the original proposal included a comprehensive plan map amendment, but through conversations with staff, that was no longer a request. And so they have identified acceptance of the initial zoning, which is included in the staff report.
Kelly, just for clarification, is this planning file A-22-03 or A-22-04?
Yeah, we're gonna say it's A-22-03.
You're gonna stay with 03?
I'm sticking with 03, if that's what's on the staff report. Yeah, let's go with 03.
All right.
Any other questions for Kelly? All right, seeing none, then we will open the public testimony portion of our hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Don Kelly. I've already signed in. I've written my address. My address is 110 North Second Street, Silverton, Oregon. And I want to thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. And I want to thank Kelly Hart for the, her knowledge and the help that she's given us along the way. She's been very useful, very cooperative, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the city attorney, who told me that no suits are allowed here. I, I understand that, and I explained to him, and I'll explain to you, that I had to, with a six o'clock meeting, I had to come directly from work, and these are my work clothes. So if you'd just forgive me for coming in my work clothes. That being said, we're here to answer any questions you might have. If you have any questions, the staff did a thorough analysis of it. Our application reflects what Ms. Hart found in her recommendation. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer them. And if you have no questions, we would ask that you follow the staff recommendation and recommend approval of this to the city council.
Okay, any questions? Okay, appears pretty straightforward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody with us tonight that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody with us that wishes to speak in opposition of the application? Okay, then we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. All further discussion will be amongst Planning Commissioners and staff. So commissioners, do you see any concerns whatsoever? Do you feel the property qualifies for annexation? The criteria has been met?
I do.
Okay. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I will. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the annexation A-22-03 to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report, and direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, and a second. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our second public hearing. Planning file S-22-03 and AR-22-06, one-track subdivision. Again, any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias? All right, seeing none, then we'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, sir. Before you tonight is a proposed subdivision and development proposal for three properties on West B Street, and these would be West, South Seventh Street. The properties are residential mixed density, which allow the proposed use, as we'll go into more detail. And the property is generally surrounded by a mix of single-family homes and a religious institution. And it's either within the county or within the city with both the designation for the comp plan and zoning of residential mixed density. The property currently does not have public utilities available to it, and so as part of the development, there will be an extension of public utilities from South Seventh Street intersection area to and through the end of the property and then through the new public street areas. For the subdivision proposal, you can see that there is a proposal for a new public street, which would provide access to the 27 lots.
Kelly, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I think where it's, the next item in our.
The agenda packet itself was misordered, but the agenda face sheet is.
Like trying to find.
Let's just recognize Kelly's tiredness of putting all this stuff together.
Okay, so what?
We are talking about B Street. On the agenda face sheet, that is the second application, which is what was announced by the chair just now. But you're looking at the third item in the agenda packet itself.
Sorry, thank you. I was.
Shall I start again?
I'm not.
Okay, I want to make sure we know which one we're on. We're on the replat or we're on the tablet?
We're on the, the B Street subdivision, so the one that you announced based off of the face sheet of subdivision S-22-03 and AR-22-06.
Oh, so this is.
That was what was announced. That's what we're talking about. Flip through a portion of your packet to the last agenda item. Sorry for the confusion.
So, then let me back up for just a minute, since we're actually talking about a different subdivision, or I mean, a different app, different public hearing than what I was considering. Let me ask again, is there any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias on B Street? Okay, hearing none, then we'll start over again.
Back again. Sorry about the confusion, everybody. Application, three properties, zone mixed use resident, mixed density residential surrounded by residential properties of a similar character and a religious institution. Utilities to be extended from Seventh Street to and through the property. Caught up? For the subdivision proposal itself, it will be accessed by two new public street segments, one in a north-south direction, one in an east-west direction. The east-west street, labeled C Street, is aligned to connect as a future alignment if development were to ever occur with the C Street that is currently a private street to the west. And then it also aligns on the other side of Seventh Street to where C Street exists. So it's meant for future subdivision connectivity if that were to ever occur. There are 27 lots for residential use that are proposed. 26 of those 27 are designed to be townhome standards, so they meet the minimum standard of 2,500 square feet and 20-foot minimum width. And then the lot one, which is on the northwest corner of the property that faces onto B Street, is designed to be a duplex development unit. On the northeast side of the subdivision is where there is a proposed storm drainage detention pond. So the layout is, as discussed, the development type would be townhomes and duplexes. Access to each of the townhomes would be through a shared driveway, drive cut between two units, which will show on the actual development plan. And that was designed in a way to maximize the amount of on-street parking that could be achieved on the new street segments, so that you can maximize the amount of parking in the area. In terms of easements that are provided, there is a public utility easement that would occur across the frontage of each of the properties to make sure that you can get all your utility lines in there. The subdivision proposal also includes requirements for when you are creating new subdivisions, you have minimum, maximum block length that some, that could occur. That is 800 feet block length and then a perimeter of, I think it's 2,000 feet. As identified in the staff report, those are being met with a shorter block length and a shorter perimeter area. And so that has been met. There is also, because it's being developed in an area that does not have a fully improved street and is in a different neighborhood that, and then we've seen developed before, we did have a traffic impact analysis that was required for this. The traffic impact analysis identified whether or not, and they studied whether or not we would need to have any sort of stop sign included at the intersection of Seventh and B Street. That was not identified as a requirement, but the area was evaluated. And the only mitigation requirements associated with the traffic impact analysis was a stop sign at the intersection of the new streets and B streets, so that people in the new streets stopped before entering onto B Streets. And so those are the requirements associated with the subdivision. And then this is the layout that you would see for the administrative review, which would be for the actual development of the townhomes. As you can see, it's kind of two units attached to each other and then side yard, so it's not a row of houses, it's just two connected units for each. And then you would have the duplex facing onto B Street itself. And then you can see on the plan there how you have the combined driveways to try to allow for additional parking on the street. And then you would have additional parking on C Street on the north side, as you can see lined up, where you would have no driveways accessing there, so it would provide parking on that. The proposal is for a one-story concept, and it does meet all of the required setbacks. It provides a 20-foot front and rear setback, which exceeds the minimum front setback requirement. But that 20-foot is provided to allow for a one-car garage with a parking spot on the front, which needs that 20 feet. And so with all of that, it does meet the requirements and the setbacks and the lot coverage, as I identified in the staff report. So it meets all the code requirements for the development as well. Through the public notification process, we did receive one email, which was included in the packet for review, which was a general opposition to the project based off of the density being next to some county land area. And so with that, there's a detailed analysis of the project as part of the staff report, now that we're on the right one. And I am available to answer any further questions. So it's, it was originally 28 lots, but then when we had to do some tweaking on the internal staff review to meet the requirements for, for different things, it turned into 27 lots, which is why you have a duplex proposed rather than 28 townhome lots. So it's 27, so it's 26 townhomes with one duplex lot, so it's the same number of units, but they're just not subdividing one of them. No. Because it's not connected to anything right now, the number of units that would be having that turn mechanism don't warrant a stop sign need at, at the intersection of the north-south and then C Street. If development were to ever occur to a greater extent and include all of that, that neighborhood, that may be something that would be evaluated in the future, but it's not needed now.
Kelly, there seems to have been a lot of effort and resources put into a traffic study on this. Did somebody just overdo it, or on the traffic study, or do you think that that was warranted?
Yes, the traffic study was warranted. We wanted to look at this from a perspective, if you look at Seventh Street now, how it sits, there is a four-way stop at, I believe it's D Street, D or E, one of the two. And so we wanted to ensure that we were doing the same thing here, looking at that, and that's really the goal of the traffic impact analysis, was to look and see what kind of traffic generation due to the Seventh Street being one of the primary accesses to the high school. We wanted to look at that and make sure that there wasn't, wasn't going to meet warrants to, to have an always stop there at Seventh and B Street. And that's the reasoning behind that. We would typically do that on most, most larger projects, especially where you're entering a high-volume street.
Thank you.
So on page two, it talks about a three-quarter street improvement. And then on page 13, it talks about a half-street. I'm just curious which one.
It'll be three-quarter street, so the, if you look at coming down West B Street, that south side will have curb gutter sidewalk all the way to and through their property. We call it a three-quarter or a half-street, whatever you want to call it. You've got to be able to have the lane width on the north side in order to, to have bypassing traffic. So it'd be more of a three-quarter street when they're done.
So one of the criteria on page 13 just said half-street.
Yeah.
But it does say full depth, half-street improvement, so that's the full depth of the roadway. And then the half-street improvement side of the equation is only one side would be sidewalk and landscape plant here.
So the, the definition of that is, so at center line of that street, they'll come in and they'll build the road base, complete everything. On the other portion of that, to the north, then it would be more of just a matching. And so whoever came and developed on the north side of that would cut along center line, build the full street section. When I say section, I mean depth, rock depth and whatnot.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's what that means. You're, you're essentially working in three-quarters of the street, but you're, you're building a true half-street.
Right, just want to make sure it's all on the same page.
Nope. Those are correct.
Any other questions? All right, then we will open the public testimony portion of our hearing. Invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward and sign in. State your name, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
It should already be on.
My name is John Joling. My address is 38363 Century Drive, Albany. Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate all the effort that's been done in the city. I am the one that would be. Appreciate all the time that's been, and your time tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Joling? All right, thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing nobody, is anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? All right, seeing no movement, then we will close the public testimony portion. All further discussion will be amongst Planning Commissioners and staff. Okay, let's see. I guess, here's the stupid question of the night.
Okay.
Is there anything that would restrict anybody from buying a unit, both sides, and just calling it a duplex?
No. They, I mean, there's nothing that restricts somebody from buying two single-family homes right next to each other, right? This is the equivalent to the same thing. What this does is it allows somebody to have two separate lots, where if they do want to treat it as a duplex, they can. If they want to be able to, to buy both of them and then sell one or rent one, that, that's up to them, and they can live in the other. It provides the flexibility of it being rental or sale.
But theoretically, creates the option that we've been talking about in our task forces?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments, questions?
I can flip to the, the letter of opposition somewhere in here, but from my memory basis, it was generally in opposition of they bought land in the county for a lower-density lifestyle, and this would change that lifestyle. If that answers the question. It's in here somewhere.
That work for you, Dawn? Any other questions, comments? Sorry?
I had a question in, I guess, regards to the dead-end areas of the streets. So one of those is a continuation of that C Street. We go all the way through. So then on the other side, how does that end? Like, is there, are there those?
Bullards?
Yes, or how is that handled to the back of that?
Cool-conditioned type-three barricades at the end of those. So the type-threes, you know, with the reflective, so that, that they'll end the street there.
And that one looks like it ends against a back fence of a home.
It does, and there's also a condition that there, if the fence is chain-linked currently to avoid light intrusion of other people's headlights, we also have a condition that a, a new fence that's full sight obscuring to be, to be constructed on either side.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Seems to be well thought out, and it addresses a need that we've been discussing.
Dawn, I have one comment if I could.
Sure.
So the sewer in here is, says that it'll come from, from B Street, and that is the goal. We're currently under design for that. And we're hoping that we. We're currently under design for that, and we're hoping that we get that there and it can meet grade. If not, it would have to come from C Street over, or Ninth Street over, down. So there is a potential for it to have to come from Ninth Street pending grades. We're still in the middle of the design. The sewer doesn't actually sit there today, but we will have that in. And either way, it can be served with sewer. I noticed in here that we said that all utilities, water line will come from Seventh Street. It's just a potential that it could have to bring sewer from Ninth Street rather than Seventh Street, depending on the grades. We're pretty hopeful that we can get it from the Seventh Street side, but until we have a final design on the stuff that we're doing with the reconstruction of Seventh Street, I just want to make that clear.
So do we need to make provision for that in our motion?
I don't think so. I think it's more of a comment. I mean, it can be served with sewer either way. We just want to confirm that, because the line doesn't currently sit in Seventh Street today. We're building that. It'll probably go out to bid later this summer on Seventh Street. So just so everybody's aware.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the conditions which it would be bound by do not specify where the sewer would come from. It just says that you will extend sewer to the site.
Okay.
And so we don't need to make any modified motion or anything.
Okay. So if there's no other comments, I'm open to a motion.
Just a quick comment. Just, is this 2203 or 2206?
It is.
What are we looking at?
On the cover sheet, it is number B, or letter B.
Agenda 5B, B Street.
Agenda 5B, and that is for S-22-03 and AR-22-06. Really just want to make sure y'all are paying attention.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission approve the proposed subdivision application, S-22-03, and administrative review, AR-22-06, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development, and direct staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Second that.
Okay, then motion and second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, then please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Now...
It is the last one on the agenda face sheet, and the second item within the agenda packet.
Okay, we'll open public hearing, S-23-01, and once again, I'll ask for experte contact, conflict of interest, or bias. Hearing none, then we'll turn over staff for staff report.
Thank you, sir. Before you tonight is an application which would normally be handled as a lot-line adjustment, which is administrative review that's ministerial at the staff level, because it's simply just moving lotlines back and forth, it's not creating lots. However, we do have a section of our code that says when you are doing a replat associated with a subdivision, you have to go through the subdivision application again. So before you tonight is a replat of eight lots that were previous eight lots and are currently eight lots, and they're just configured differently. And so the property is located on the north leg of Stoltz Hill Road, north of Airport Road. It is zoned residential mixed density, and it's surrounded by residential mixed-density-zoned land and a mix of single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments. And it is able to be serviced by the public facilities that are located in Stoltz Hill Road that was built a couple of years ago. The replat is basically to reposition the properties. It would create two flaglots instead of one, and to create that second flaglot, it's actually taking property from the property to the south. I call it 911 Airport Road, that's the address. It's not originally a part of the subdivision, but the property owner who now owns these eight lots also owns the 911 Airport Road lot. So he's proposing to take some of that lot area on Airport Road and give it to the subdivision to be able to create the two flaglots. And then you're really just moving the property lines along Stoltz Hill Road to create the traditional single-family home development standard of a minimum of 50 feet width and 5,000 square feet wide. And that would allow for them to build either a traditional single-family detached home or a duplex on any of these properties. As it previously sat, it would have to be an attached unit or zero lot-line type development. This just makes it more of a simple, traditional design. And so that is what has been proposed. The two flaglots meet the flaglot standard by having at least a minimum of 12 feet of frontage along Stoltz Hill Road, and they would be sharing an access point. And there is a development proposal for the Airport Road address, which will be presented to the Planning Commission at a separate time, but that is not proposed under this application. But they would be sharing the access point as well in the future, if it were to be approved. Through the public notification process, we did receive a letter from the Homeowners' Association that these eight lots are part of. It's shared with the other lots on the east side of Stoltz Hill Road. There was identified concerns and confusion about whether or not the Airport Road property would be used for commercial use. That's been clarified that that's not the proposal, and just concerns about whether or not the proposal in front of the Planning Commission meets the HOA requirements for their CCNRs. In looking at their points, I believe we included and provided an email chain between staff and the HOA representatives that was clarifying points of how the project did still meet the CCNRs and still met the city's codes, and we provided that to the Planning Commission and made it available to the public as well. And so clarification was provided, but they still want to provide their general opposition in concern that there might be a commercial use on the Airport Road property, which again is not really part of this proposal. So that is the public comment that was provided. Again, pretty simple, straightforward, moving out of some lotlines. And with that, I will conclude my staff report and answer any questions.
Well, I'm just kind of curious on this one sentence here on this letter. I'll read it. "Any construction within the Applegate subdivision is required to be approved by the HOA Architectural Committee prior to being approved by the City of Lebanon for conformance to the CCNRs of the properties." Now, this might be a question for Trey. Does the HOA dictate to the state?
I could answer that question.
I mean, it's like, you know, whatever zoning we apply to an area, doesn't the HOA have to conform to that zoning requirements? Or do we have to conform to their HOA requirements?
No, 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 no. So the city sets the minimum zoning standards, and HOA can set additional restrictive standards to any lot that's within the HOA area. Standard stuff that you think of is like similar color schemes. When you paint your house, it needs to be approved by the HOA for meeting the color palette of the HOA. The city doesn't enforce the HOA, it doesn't enforce the CCNRs, we have nothing to do with it, and until they sent us the CCNRs, we've never seen them before. So through agreeing to purchase a property within an HOA, you agree to follow the CCNRs, and the CCNRs have an enforcement tool, and they have a remedy tool to them, which is a private matter between those within the subdivision. City doesn't have anything to do with it.
I understand that. Does the city have to approve CCNRs? Is there some kind of an approval process, or can they just make up their own little contract?
As long as they don't conflict with what the city requires.
Okay. So if the city zones that, you know, mixed-use, the HOA can't come in and say, "Well, wait a minute, you guys can't do that."
So that's where it becomes a private matter. So right now, it is zoned in compliance with the HOA and how it wants to sit. If this property owner came and applied to the city to do a zone change, the city would process that zone change in conformance with the city's standards. If that zone change was in conflict with the CCNRs, then it is the HOA that then has the enforcement and the remedy of the property owner for them to comply with the HOA standards. Again, the city has no basis of that. The only point in time when a city would get involved with CCNRs and in HOAs is if we were putting specific restrictions on a development, which we've never done here, and I don't think that we would do here in any future, but cities can put a requirement in CCNRs for certain things. And the only time in which we would then approve the CCNRs is in ensuring that they meet the standards that the city would put in it. We're not doing that, though. So it's two separate documents, city has nothing to do with it. We understand that there's rules that these properties would have to apply by the CCNRs, but the city would not get involved with what that would look like.
Now, I understand the guy's not going to build a mini-mart or anything like that there, but if he wanted to, would the HOA be able to stop him from doing that?
Yes.
Well, the HA, it would be a private matter. I mean, they could file an injunction, they could file a cease and desist, you know, whatever they want to do, but it doesn't involve the city.
Because they, in theory, knew of those.
Yeah, they're recorded, so they're on notice.
They're recorded against the property.
So that's a, HOA can then...
When you do a title report to purchase it or whatever, those would come up in the chain of title.
And so the buyer of the property would have the option saying, "Well, I don't want to buy it with these restrictions."
Either buy it subject to, or you don't buy it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll open our public testimony portion, invite the applicant's representative to come forward, state your name, sign in.
My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering. I'm the applicant representative this evening. As always, Kelly does a great overview of the projects, so I don't think I have too much to say, other than what you're already aware of. So lots 14 through 21 are a part of the original Applegate subdivision. The applicant is proposing to test those property lines to make those lot widths wider, to allow for a wider range of residential development. Included in the proposals is a property line adjustment between Lot 21 and the abutting property to the south at 911 Airport Road, which allows them to increase those lot widths and also to create a new flaglot for... I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions that we might have.
Any questions? Looks pretty simple, really. Thank you, Laura.
I'm making her do homework.
Sorry?
I'm making her do homework by writing her name down. That's fine.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? And seeing none, then we will close public testimony. Any concerns about the replat? On paper, it looks a little bit complicated, but in reality, it's pretty simple. Any concerns? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. And moving on to commissioner comments.
We are aligned to do a meeting in April. I'm anticipating one application, potentially two, and so that would be our normal meeting. We also have a special meeting scheduled sometime. I believe it's in April, so that would be April 26 at 5:00 p.m. That is to do a work session with the Planning Commission with our Economic Opportunity Analysis Consultants. So, gosh, it's been a year, I think. We had a discussion about who wants to be on the board and who wants to participate, and we've had Dawn and Tina be a great representation of the Planning Commission, where we have talked through some economic opportunities, buildable lands, and kind of what we want to see as a community moving forward in terms of economic development. And so at this work session, our consultants will be presenting the findings and what are the proposed policies and actions moving forward for the next five to seven years. So that will be presented at the special meeting on April 26, again at 5:00 p.m. And we do not have any more housing production strategy work sessions scheduled for the Planning Commission. We had a very successful work session with the city council last week. That was only last week. And we got to a consensus that the Planning Commission also got to with one minor tweak. The city council made the determination not to move forward with any changes to the multifamily apartment standards for this go-around. So they would propose to make everything as-is, because it's been successful so far, and we'll look at that one again in eight years, but everything else was accepted as policies to include in the document. So the next step that the Planning Commission will see is still up in the air. I haven't figured that part out yet, I'll let you know. But we are, for both of those big planning documents, coming to a close, what that will ultimately look like for the Planning Commission is going to be a comprehensive plan amendment process to update the two chapters of the comprehensive plan regarding jobs and growth and housing. That's ultimately what this has gotten us to, is to update those sections. So with that, unless there's any questions, I don't have any additional reports.
I don't have a question about that, but I have another question.
Okay.
And it's probably going to be a really long one.
Really upset with you.
This is a really simple one. In the replat and in the townhome subdivision, there was a comment in there about the plat had to be recorded within three years. Is that a state statute, or is that city?
Both, I believe.
So state dictates that? Because that seems like an awfully long time.
It's not, when you really think about it, because that needs to give everybody the time to do, realistically, when it gets to the Planning Commission, it's truly in the initial phases of, does this pencil out? Does this look like it's something that we can do? And then you still got to go through the rest of it, you still need to figure out whether or not the property can be replatted based off of the construction costs. What are the terms in which it would be platted? What are the conditions? And getting it through the whole process, three years, is not a horrifically long period of time in the grand scheme of things.
So I thought it was after final approval, three years.
Final approval being hearing body approval, and then to be able to record it.
Okay, okay. Okay, just curious, I've not focused on that before. That's all. So anything else with the Planning Commission comments? Kelly has a plane to catch. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Where are you going?